I'll call to order the Berlin Boylston Regional Transition School Committee. Dorothy, we do have on our agenda, we did have, we do have one business item that we need to vote on real quick.
Okay.
On our agenda, we have it after our discussion with you, but I was hoping we could just bump that up real quick. I'll just, we'll get that vote taken care of and get that off our plate. Is that okay with everybody else as well?
Sure.
So did everybody, everybody, so the one item we need to vote on for business items is just the updated school calendar. It was put in the drive. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to take a look at that. It obviously just takes into consideration the snow days and COVID days and the days that we utilized over April vacation and just updates for last day of school and that type of stuff. So the reason we wanted to vote on it tonight was just so Jeff can make it part of his Friday update to parents on Friday. So from a time perspective, just to kind of get that rolling. And so, does anybody have any questions or comments, concerns, or anything, or at least to the updated calendar? All right, then we, can I have a motion to approve the new revised as presented 2019, 2020 school calendar?
I moved.
Second.
Angela moved, Susan second. Thank you very much. We'll run down the roll call vote here. I'm going to go by the Brady Bunch squares. We're going to go Cliff.
Aye.
Who do we, who do we have? Lori.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Susan.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. All right. Thank you.
Say, Keith, I think that's the theme song you got to work on for the next meeting.
What's that?
I think the Brady Bunch is the theme song.
There's a story.
Okay, so the only, all right, so we can just move into obviously the main topic of tonight, which is our governance workshop with Dorothy. Thank you, Susan, for the communication you had with Dorothy back and forth of the last week as it relates to updating her with some of our information. Dorothy did provide us with the, the update that I sent to everybody. Hopefully, everybody got that via email. But I don't know, Dorothy or Susan, did you guys have a way you wanted to start tonight?
I guess I was, I was thinking based on, I was thinking, I don't have a formal presentation tonight. I've done that for you a number of times and you seem quite far into the process. So it didn't seem like I needed to describe the whole superintendent evaluation process and cycle. I did have some specific questions that Susan had posed about, a discussion about what does exceeded mean on the goals? And what are some of the, the changes or the, how would you feed the closed, school closures due to the pandemic sort of into the evaluation process? So other than that, I just, I want to make sure that if there are any other questions or things you want me to cover, I know that upfront before we sort of dive into those topics.
Yeah, I want to bear in mind that this is Lori's first time going through this process. So I want to make sure that we give plenty of opportunity for her to make sense of this process, to ask questions. And also Cliff, I think it would be useful at some point to talk about some of the places we bumbled last year with the form so that we're, we can maybe, maybe we can avoid some of that. There is one other question we're still, I still have to determine, I guess, although I don't know what the options are. Last year, we used a, an electronic version of this evaluation form and it had some limitations and proved to be a little bit more difficult than we anticipated. And so we were thinking about doing a hard copy form, form this year. But then that necessitates everybody giving their feedback and everything with handwriting, basically. And I'm not sure if everybody wants to do that or not. So we need, we need to just settle on, I guess, the format of the actual evaluation form that people will receive in May.
So just to clarify, when you say an electronic version of the form, you mean you had the Word document and people filled it out electronically and sent it to Cliff at that point?
I think it was done as a PDF with fillable fields.
Yeah.
But the, some of the fields didn't, weren't open for like paragraph narrative kinds of entries. And so when Cliff went to go and copy and paste that people's descriptions into a summative form, not all of it was viewable and it was cumbersome, I guess. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so we did convert the document to a PDF. Maybe it was a PDF already. I don't remember. But we had to convert it to a writable PDF so that you could write on it. Working with our technology people in the district, they had some difficulty with that. So that when the members of the committee got the form, you could start typing your comment, but then your remarks would disappear as you were writing. And then when I got the completed form, I could only see like the beginning of your comments. I couldn't see the end of your comments. I did devise a strategy. I figured out a way of taking care of that. I just clicked on the box and said, what is it? All, do, collect all? And it would pop up and I could see the whole thing. But it was, it was far more complicated than I anticipated. I'm not sure it was worth the effort.
There may be other ways to do it. I imagine districts must have other ways of.
Yeah, I'm a little bit surprised because generally, any of the documents about evaluation on the DUCY website are in both PDF and Word form.
The PDF as in with fillable fields?
I would have used the Word form because that would have had the fillable.
Okay, so what we do is we use the PDF form with the fillable, which made it far more complicated than it needed to be, I think, for sure.
Okay, we'll check, we'll check the Word version on that. That would be nice.
Okay, so.
We did ultimately get everything, though. It just was more complicated than it should have been.
Yeah, I think the other thing that, that was a little bit challenging with the form, sorry, we're starting at the back end.
That's fine.
Is that because there are multiple pages in the form, we had some trouble with people completing the form correctly. So somewhere down in the form, they might have noted a certain rating or a certain rating. And then that has to get transferred back up onto pages one through three. And sometimes that was not done accurately or, or, or some of the ratings were left off. They were marked later in the document, but not up on the front three pages. And I think part of that is because it's an electronic form and you're scrolling through pages as opposed to, it's probably easier. I think maybe people need to have the hard copy visible as well or something. Or maybe they make notes on their hard copy and then go into the fillable form. That to me might make one way, one way to use the hard copy so that you keep track of everything, the whole sequence, is to make some notes on it. And then when you feel ready, go into the electronic form.
Or just be aware that the summary page is in the front that needs to be, summary page needs to be completed before you're done.
Right, right. So, so maybe a walkthrough of those pages before we're done tonight would be helpful.
And just a comment on writing, Susan, until last year, we always hand wrote our evaluations. Is that correct, Angela?
I think you're muted.
You did, Angela.
Sorry. I mean, I.
I mean, I recall doing it twice in handwriting, so I don't know.
Maybe people did that and then scanned them in and then sent them to me that way, the one year I compiled them. But, but yeah, no, I like your idea, Susan, since you already have the evaluation for us in the.
In the notebook.
Notebook.
Yeah.
You know, we could refer to that as we're filling out the Word document.
That, that's a good, that's a good observation. That's correct.
So in the, because I know, Susan, you had sent me a while ago, some questions about subcommittee. So in the process now, has, you're getting, the committee as a whole is getting ready for the individual members to fill out their forms and get it to the subcommittee?
Yeah, Lori and I are going to be doing the subcommittee. We'll distribute the forms, make sure everybody has them, answer any questions they have. Make sure that when we receive them, that they're completed, that there aren't gaps and holes or things missing. And then we'll compile them. And then, getting funny, anybody else getting funny? Why is that?
I don't know. I'm getting an echo, but I'll mute myself. Maybe that'll help.
The, so we'll cut and paste those things in. And when there is a clear consensus, we'll, we'll make a recommendation around that. If there isn't a clear consensus and there seems to be some division or we, we don't see the consensus, we will leave it blank and leave it open for this committee to discuss when it comes forward. Does that sound like everything that we were to do?
I think that. That certainly sounds reasonable.
Okay, yeah, and then I think the, the other issue that we talked about was the distribution of the summative form when it's all compiled. I was concerned about making sure people had enough time to read it rather than receiving it at the meeting and then having to go straight into a discussion of compensation in response to that. My understanding, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding was that we could release it earlier in the day so people can read it ahead of time. But that it's essentially public at that point. And so, I mean, it's possible, one, it's possible somebody might attend the subcommittee meeting and it's possible that someone could request the summative form, to see the summative form before it's discussed at this school committee meeting. So I think, I think for that reason, that's another reason why if there's any lack of clarity about the consensus of a rating, that we just leave that blank until it comes to the meeting. Otherwise, the superintendent and the committee would have a chance to read this, you know, a few hours ahead of the meeting so that we come in more prepared for the discussion that we should be having.
Again, I mean, you are correct that it becomes a public document as soon as it is in the hands of individual committee members. I haven't really heard of people rushing to get it. You know, non-committee members just rushing in to try and get that ahead of the meeting. But the process that you are talking about again, sounds like, you know, quite a reasonable way that's within, within, within the law and a reasonable way to allow for people to see it ahead of time without, without, again, being outside of the law.
Good, thank you.
So usually when I talk about sort of getting to the end of the process, you'll have a, a point and where the superintendent will make some sort of a presentation, sort of summarizing the year, doing a self-assessment or recap of the year, you know, whatever you call it, however you refer to it there. And then I sort of think about the individual committee members sitting down at the kitchen table with a bunch of stuff in front of them to be able to, to fill out the form. You've got the, the information from the superintendent, the evidence that has been presented or built up during the course of the year. You've got the rubric in front of you and you have your form in front of you. And you go to work and fill out that form and pass it along to, in this case, the subcommittee. So that's sort of the work of the individual committee members. We always talk about, to the extent possible, because we're all individuals, using, you want to make sure that you're, when you're thinking about your ratings and when you're thinking about the narrative comments, that you're sort of being able to back that up with the evidence. So, you know, a comment should be either evidence, you know, the super, from this presentation, I got this. My, so the evidence is not just what the superintendent has told you, but you've also had observations of the superintendent's work throughout the course of the year that you can call on as sort of the, the backup to your comments. And that helps, you know, I think you've done a good job of following the cycle up to this point. So hopefully having sort of common understandings of what is intended to be accomplished by the superintendent. So that helps those ratings be tighter and less chance for them being spread out all over the board. And then it makes the whole process much easier to tie together at the end. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, and I want to mention too, Lori, when did you start on the committee?
I, it was in February.
February, okay. So, so Lori can really only provide evidence February, March, April, and into May, beginning of May. And my feeling is that it's really, but I don't know, I'd like to know your thoughts on this, Dorothy, how other committees handle this. But if you ever feel like, well, I just don't know enough to form a judgment on this. Like, let me provide some observations that I've had, but maybe I don't feel comfortable forming a judgment on a rating based on the limited time that I've seen him doing his work on the committee. My assumption is that she could choose not to put a rating in, but maybe to make some comments that could be folded into the summative collection of comments from across the committee. Is that how people handle that typically?
That's general, I mean, every once in a while, there's someone who says, you know what? I haven't been on long enough to feel I can participate at all. But, you know, can take the, the observations, the experience that you've had from February, Lori, up until the point when you're filling out the evaluation. And do, do it to the extent that you feel is, is reasonable for you to be able to have good judgment. And what we want to be careful of is people who get on the committee and say, you know, last, the reason I ran was because last year this happened and I want to make sure I stick that in the evaluation. So that's why we try to say, you're, you know, you're evaluating it during the time you were a committee member, not going back into the past and bringing other things. Sometimes people invite people who, sometimes committees invite the members who have stepped off to participate in, in providing some comments as well or providing an evaluation up until the point they stepped off the committee and fold that in. Obviously, it's the, the committee that's at the table. At the time you're voting on, this is the final evaluation that has that vote. But you can also take in information from people who have been there on the past and fold that into the composite as well.
Would they, would they also be providing a rating?
They could, yep, yep.
So I, I was thinking about that because I was thinking, one of the challenges to that is they no longer have access, I assume, to the Google Drive and to the compilation of evidence that superintendent's been, the district office has been uploading into that drive throughout the year. So they're kind of left to cite evidence from memory. Is that right?
I mean, you could give them access.
Okay.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, sorry I'm late. I don't have an excuse. It's not like I had to drive anyplace.
Okay, so we haven't decided, I think, as a committee, whether we ought to be sending this form to Lori. Lori Martiscia. You know, she, she had months up until February, no, it was it up, when did she step off? January? I can't remember now, December?
It was like November, I think.
November, pretty short then.
Well, yeah, and if the goals, were the goals were set in sort of the October timeframe?
Yeah. Yeah. I see Angela shaking her head like, no, what do you think?
Yeah, I was, I disagree with Dorothy, I, I think. But when she left, it was so close to when the goals were just being formulated and voted on. I don't think it's worthwhile, actually.
Jim, Cliff, Keith, what do you think?
I agree with Angela. Plus, I don't think, I don't think she wants anything to do. I think she's done, so.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. Lori, does that help you think about how to approach it as a newcomer?
Yes, and I genuinely appreciate that question because that was in my head.
Yeah, I can remember feeling it myself, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Just from a, from a, like, as I get concerned about, I, I get concerned about the legal side of things. My discussions with legal is that we absolutely can recommend that a, that a new committee member only participates as it relates to the timeframe they've been on committee, but we can't stop them from, there's no action to be able to stop them from voting or providing ratings as it relates to other ti, other aspects of that, but you know, they have a full, those are really simple evaluation. But I don't, I don't, I don't foresee us running into that issue. I just want everybody to know that was the feedback from, from legal on that.
Yep, right, you can't, I mean, you can't stop them. But you can, as a committee, you know, if you decide that there, there are comments that should not be part of, that don't belong in the composite evaluation, that's the, I mean, the composite evaluation is in the end a committee vote. So minority, the minority voice might not be as prevalent or the committee may decide that there are comments or parts of it that aren't appropriate or are appropriate, so.
Right.
Okay. Well, I wonder if it would be helpful to take a minute to just differentiate providing an evaluation around the goals versus the standards and making sure we're clear on how those are related but different.
I, yeah, they, they're most definitely related. And I, I think sometimes it's easier to really sort of tie them together and think of them almost as, as one in the sense that there shouldn't need to be a set of evidence for the goals and a set of evidence for the standards. Should be able to use the same body of evidence for looking at both. With the goals, you're looking at what was supposed to be accomplished for the district. With the standards, you're looking at the rubric and figuring out where, you know, where you think the performance fell on the rubric. It's hard to say, for example, that a goal was met, but that the standard was, you know, way down at the bottom of the scale. Or that a goal wasn't met, but the standard was way up at the top of the scale. So I think there is a relation that you kind of look at in terms of thinking about them both sort of on the same continuum, I guess is maybe the best word.
Yeah, I mean, I think of the standards as being more broad. Goals being very specific activity within that standard. So when, so I could imagine, for instance, that a, a goal might be completed, but a standard might be, you know, potentially might be rated a little lower because there is just more involved at the standard level for professional behaviors that they're responsible for.
I guess I would find it hard to say that a goal was met, but that a standard was, needs improvement or unsatisfactory. And I guess, you know, a lot of times when I talk about goals, I think about the goals are unique to Berlin Boylston and what moved Berlin Boylston forward. And the standards are the same for all superintendents across the state. So in some ways, that's the differentiation to make for me between the goals and the standards.
And the standards, we're just looking at the focal indicators, correct, when we're forming a judgment?
Yes, I mean, as opposed to.
Like, for instance, under the instruction indicator.
Yeah.
The student engagement piece was the, was the focal aspect of that related to his goals. But there's also quality of effort and work and meeting diverse needs. And so when we're reading this instruction indicator, are we paying attention only to the, to the pieces that were directly aligned with his goals?
You're paying only attention to the ones that you identified as the focus indicators.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So I wonder if we could then flip a little bit, well, to the effect of the the school closures because, and Jeff, you can speak to this, but I think, and you, you've started to do that. Good time to do it again. There are certain goals that, which were on track and, you know, probably would have been completed by the end of the year, except for the, all this pandemic stuff that came in. And so we can, we can comment on and rate the work that was done to date to March. And in your guidance that you sent ahead of time, you said there was a suggestion in there to rate an unfinished goal, but a goal that looked like it was on track to be finished as it wasn't meeting, it wasn't met. It was whatever was underneath that.
Well, I guess, and Jeff, jump in please, if you feel, you know, if you want to. But obviously, a goal that was on track to be met probably came to a crashing halt in mid-March. And because the work totally changed. So it's in a way, you don't want to, in a way, saying it's met isn't quite accurate because at some point, you might want to pick up the work, right, and finish the goal. But if it was on track to be met, then giving it the weight of met, I think, is perfectly appropriate, even though, you know, you might have, make up a rating of on target just for this year with the weight of met in the, in the total evaluation.
Yeah, I think in your, in your guidance, it said significant progress. You could market as significant progress, but it would, it would have the meaning of being.
Met.
Met.
Yeah.
Being on track.
Yep.
So if that's the case, we all need to agree that that's how we're going to treat goals that are partially, partially completed, but would have been on track, would be to rate them significant progress. But understand them as, as met as they could have been, look like they were on track to being met.
Jeff, do you have any, do you have any comments about that? Because you're probably in the same situation with a lot of your administrators.
Yeah, I mean, I think all of my goals, for, for the most part, have at least been altered in some way. Some of them have just had to stop. Like, obviously, the, the goal where attending community events, that, that just stopped. So there's nothing I can do with that one. But a couple of them that I continue with, with things like mentoring the principals. So that's just had to be altered. So that relied on me going into the classrooms with teachers, with the principal and, and watching the teachers teach. So I have collected evidence of that. One of the, one of the pieces of evidence that I, I said to the school committee that I would collect was evidence from teachers as to whether it's been helpful. Was evidence from teachers as to whether it's been helpful at all, this process. And so I said to the principals, you know, just, you, you can't, you just gotta, you just gotta go and, and talk to the teachers and say. Has it been while we, while we were going, while we were still in school? Did any of what we were doing, was it helpful, or did it do what we intended it to do? So that, so that goal has been changed. It doesn't mean I don't work with the principals now on, on, you know, best practices for teachers. The problem is that I don't know what that looks like all the time, I, I, I don't. You know, I don't have an expertise in remote learning, the principals don't, and the teachers certainly don't, so. It's sort of, it's sort of learn as you go. You know, we are looking at things, we, we, we do have some things we are looking at across the board with teachers. But the goal certainly has changed. I have another goal around enrollment, which I was supposed to meet with. Town officials and, and do some work with them. And so instead, I've, I've switched the focus and did, and now doing that work with the principals, because I have access to the principals on a daily basis. So I just sort of, but they've been altered, there's no question they've been altered, and in some of them, like the, the mentoring thing. I, I, I don't know the answer to it, because now that we're doing remote learning. You know, I can go back and forth with the teachers, with the principal, as to what the teachers are doing and what to look for. But I'm finding each day that this remote learning thing looks, looks a lot different than, than in classroom teaching, so. I'll have something at the end of the month, but, you know, I'll certainly just kind of report out on what I have, but I don't think there's any of my goals that haven't been touched at all. Because they already lie on you being in, either in the district or in the schools.
So that, that brings up a good point, Dorothy. And I think it, you mentioned it in your document that you provided to us, just some, some healthy guidelines in terms of. Do we need to provide additional time to Jeff? To present his goal, I think, I think that was in your update, you talked about. Potentially.
Yeah, potentially.
The evaluations, and when we ask him to present. You know, he may not feel the same, today could be one of those days where it's coming across that way, but I, I felt a little bit of. Sounds like some. Some, some need to, to, to pick up some stuff, Jeff, do you, I mean, do you feel like. You are in a position where you might need some additional time to be able to efficiently provide what you think it is in terms of for your evaluation?
No, I mean, I've, I've, I never wait to the end to do it, so I've been collecting evidence, or, you know, Christie has folders, I've collect, collected things from principals. It's just a different goal, it's just, a- as long as you accept that. Or you, you know, you can work with the fact that this goal, that the goal is not exactly the same goal that it started, started out as. At the beginning of the year, then, then I'm fine with it, I've already started my, my write-up, and. And honestly, I'd rather get it, I'd rather get it under my belt, because, you know, the next step in this remote learning is. You know, will be that phase four of, of finding out how we're going to get, how we're going to get kids back in school. I'd rather not have this piece hanging over my head, I'd rather get it done. Because most of the work at that's going to be done in June and then over the summer. And, and I think I'm in, I think I'm in pretty good shape with it. You know, as long as you're okay with the fact that, and I know I went over it at the last meeting, I went over how my goals are gonna, are, are gonna change a little bit. As long as that's fine, then, you know, I think I'm in okay shape.
And so Jeff, if the, if the form, if on the form, on these goals that are not completed for. Because of this school closure issue. If everybody in the group puts significant progress on goals instead of met. But we understand that as, as met is, is reasonably, could be done. Is that okay with you to do it, approach it that way?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay.
Mostly what's changed for me, and I, I, I think this is probably true of other superintendents I've talked to, is the day-to-day work. You know, it's the day-to-day stuff, which, you know, it's, which incorporates, you know, these goals at some point. But it's just the day-to-day, trying to get things done, trying to communicate with. With directors and the principals and, and with Christie. That's been the biggest loss, is, is, is trying to organize myself, but, you know, most of it is the day-to-day.
Yeah.
Day-to-day work.
Yeah. Well, I'm wondering if anybody has any questions about. Process of moving through this form and evaluating the. Goals and then evaluating the standards, so I want to make sure that. People have a chance to ask their questions or raise confusions they have about those two phases of the evaluation.
Doesn't look like there's any questions.
Okay. So then. One of the things I had raised earlier on, which you mentioned, Dorothy, was. A question about. The, the met versus exceeded category, and, you know, that may be. That may be moot now that the Jeff has had his time kind of cut off on a lot of these goals. It's, it seems unlikely that there will be exceeded when the goals have stopped. That, that part of the work has stopped in March, but there, but there are, in terms of the standards. It seems to me there, there are now some standards that are relevant. That were not necessarily affiliated with the original goals, so for example, family support. Or communications. Become elevated, and you can, you know, throw in your own thoughts on this, Jeff, but it seems to me some, some standards that were, were not up in the spotlight in. October have risen up. Under this, this school closure phase. And wondering if you agree with that, Jeff, and if it means then. That we need to give some attention to some of these other standards as maybe bearing some importance in its evaluation.
Well, I, I, oh, go ahead, Dorothy.
That, I was gonna say, I, you know, I think that. It's a valid point that the, there is a, a change in the superintendent's focus. As soon as, as soon as the school's closed and the need to develop the remote learning, and you want to be able to recognize that. And recognize some of the good work that was done. In order to keep kids safe, in order to protect social, emotional. Health of the staff and the, and the students and all the tremendous amount of work, I think, that superintendents and administrators have been busy with since the closures. At the same time, not. Pulling out the rug from what you told the superintendent originally, you would evaluate the superintendent on, and. And replacing it with other things, so I think, I'm not sure there's a perfect answer to that challenge. But, you know, and it may be that, as, as Jeff said, some of the goals have changed. Like, he can't go to community events, but certainly. He's been most likely communicating with the community in a much different way, and probably a much more intense way through this. Than he may have planned on doing, probably, than he planned on doing. And doing important work on those, so. I'm not sure if there's a perfect answer to it, but I think that discussing how do you recognize. The yeoman's job, I think, that a lot of superintendents have been working on since this started. In the evaluation cycle and not just saying, well, we set these goals and, you know, we'll leave it at that, and we set these standards and we'll leave it at that.
Yeah. How do people envision doing that when you sit down to do this evaluation?
I'm thinking back to, excuse me, last year in particular. Where I had an intimate knowledge of what was coming across the table when I was flooded with these evaluations. And one of the issues in, last year when we did this was that there was no formal evaluation process for Jeff the first six months he was here. And yet, it was obvious that many of our committee members wanted to acknowledge. The good work that had been done in those first six months. You know, through the induction process and the development of the, of his plan. And so people wrote extensively about that in their comments. And were laudatory about it in their comments. And although it didn't get a score anywhere. The impression I got was that it was influencing the way they scored on the standards as well as the goals. But if, if a goal wasn't clearly obvious, then I think they were influenced in terms of their, the score they gave for standard. I, so it wasn't formalized, but I think it went on last year.
Any other thoughts about how you might handle that? Angela, or Jim, or Keith?
If I could just say, when I read my evaluation last year, there were some things in there that just spoke to. My, my first six months, which I didn't have those formal goals, so I did appreciate that, 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 that some place. That was, that was officially recognized, that, that, that those six months existed someplace, and that, that it was put in. And it was put in there, I mean, and I don't know, I don't know about the. I don't know really about this document, if it's so strict that, that school committee members aren't allowed to do that. But I can tell you from, from my standpoint. It's, it's nice to see that just beyond the goals, that the official goals, official three or four goals. That the daily work is recognized somehow. And, and then actually, in this case, you know, I, I probably, like I said, it's that day-to-day stuff that's really. Taken up most of my time and, and, you know, my thinking in the last, in the last few weeks. I've, I've, you know, been collecting some evidence and then working on my write-up and things, but. It's really al- almost secondary to. Just kind of trying to figure out what to do remotely. With the district every day, and to try to keep things on track, and. You know, I've had more meetings with, I've always tried to keep in touch with superintendents, you know, especially given how much time I have on the job. But more now than, more now than ever, I think, I'm probably, I'm probably on the phone with my, my mentor, with Chris Johnson. Probably two, three times a week, and it helps that she's, she's the executive, she's the assistant director at, at Moz. So she has a lot of information for me, so if I miss it, I get it, but. You know, clearly, most of my work has been just the everyday running of the district.
I'd also like to add that, you know, as an individual committee member. Not as the compiler of information, but as an individual member, Jeff gives us his reports, and then he will give us his. His report on goals, whatever it is, next month. But I think as a committee member, you're sometimes thinking, well, why didn't he talk about this, and why didn't he talk about that? And what that, what that indicates to me is that there's a lot more than what he tells us. That we, we know things, and we've observed things, and we've noted things. So I think that. That's where the comments come in really important, too, I think that's how people address that. That issue is when they wanted to flesh out why they were. Thinking what they were thinking, they would cite specific details that Jeff didn't cite. You know, they went beyond what he said. I think if we limit ourselves to what he reports. It's, it's not adequate.
And that's, and that's where, and that's where I say in the evidence, your own observations are, are pieces of evidence, as well as whatever. Whatever you get from Jeff, I would also say that probably for the most part, for Jeff's. You know, to help Jeff work with the committee, work in the district, that probably the narrative part of the evaluation. Is more valuable than the checkmarks. And certainly, it gives all of you the opportunity to sort of not let process get in the way of product. But enable you to. To fold in the, the different aspects that, that you're talking about, Cliff and others.
I think, Dorothy, you just nailed it, in my opinion, on the head, where you talked about. Process versus product, I think that particularly is important, too, for new school committee members. Because the evaluation can seem cumbersome as it relates to the process and. The terminology and the definitions and X, Y, and Z, where the comment portion of that allows you to convey what you really think. Where if you struggle with what the definition of proficient or exceeds means, and you struggle be going in between those two. You can back up that, your choice or your decision, or, for lack of better terms, you're, just your, your evidence in your, in your comments, right? So that when we do get to the open discussion about it, if I recall from last year. I believe some of that narrative definitely helped us make some decisions on some of the areas that we were sort of stuck in the middle on. Right? So, so I think it's, that's, you know, the standards to me are the process. And it's that comment portion that allows you to kind of. Paint, put the color around it, I suppose.
So Dorothy, would you go over? I, I, I agree with you, Jim, and I just, but it's putting me back to thinking about these categories. Will you go over again what exceeds means, from the state's framework, when they want you to use exceeds?
The state doesn't really talk about using exceeds in the goals, they don't really speak much about. How to interpret the goals, they, unless you're thinking about exemplary as opposed to proficient?
Uh, yeah, that is what I meant, it's, well, there is met, for the goals, there's met and exceeded.
Yeah.
There's proficient and exemplary for the standards.
Right, so, you know, so far as the state giving a definition of. You know, the different, the different categories on goals, they're much more silent about that than they are what the standards are in terms of the rating. They leave that, the significant progress, met, exceeded, so forth, much more to the. Interpretation of the committees, the individual committees. I know that's not a big help. I, you know, I think in general terms, exceeded was you accomplished more than you anticipated accomplishing. In the very broad aspect of things, and. When you, I think when you have a goal where you've pretty clearly defined what is going to be accomplished. It's easy to see if there's more, for instance, if you have a goal. That had some numbers on it around, you know, improvement in scores, and they improved more than you, than you. Reached for, you would probably say you exceeded that goal. Just thinking about, you know, again, sort of a goal around communication. That if you're thinking about. Jeff was going to go to community events, and, and then he comes back and he says, you know, I went to the community events and I. Expanded my meetings to meet more with municipal officials, and, you know, these are all the things I did beyond what I said I would do to. Work, you know, to communicate with the community, then it would say, well, yeah, he exceeded that goal. But I think that's unfortunately, or not. That's a little bit more. Not as tightly defined by the state as, as the, the ratings on the rubric.
Well, it's also confounded with this. Pandemic situation, I mean, you could make the case, just to play a devil's advocate kind of thing here, that. He's exceeded on multiple goals because he's had to do all these things he didn't anticipate doing at the beginning of the year. During this last couple of months. So the, you could have exceeded all the way down. So the, you could have exceeded all the way down the goals list now because he, he's had to go over the top on so many new aspects of his work.
I guess I, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm gonna, I'm not sure I know enough about all the things that have gone on to comment about that. You know, if one of the things is looking out five years on enrollments.
Yeah, okay.
You know, something, something, either probably ways when Jeff could make a case that, you know what? I, I was on track to meet this and then things changed and I put my foot on the gas pedal to do some other things that were related to the goal. And we got further than we anticipated or other things where as, you know, the work changed or the work had to stop to, to take care of other things. So I think it might be a little more goal specific then.
Okay. So how does the state, what's the definition of exemplary on the standards?
The, it, oh my gosh, I usually have to read it to, exemplary generally is, can serve as an example for others, right? So it can model this for others. So if Jeff is not only doing it, but training others to do it or it becomes, you know, the, the, you're the go to district for other districts to come and look at a certain aspect of the work. Or if you just think of exemplary is sets an example. Off the top of, there is a specific definition of exemplary. I don't have it right in front of me and I usually count on being able to read it.
There's a short version of it right on the form. A rate of exemplary force indicates that practice significantly exceeds proficient and could serve as a model of practice. Reach or at the state level.
Yep.
Okay. So would it be helpful for people to walk through this form at this point to make sure that we're all, we all understand how to approach this summative form or to look at the rubric? What, what would be most helpful for you?
I think that would be good simply for the, you know, new people. It's good to understand how it's set up and what you're really looking at. Even if you, when you send out the form and the Word document, even if you black out the indicators we're not looking at or evaluating on, I think it's good to just breeze through it.
Yeah, I think that's, whether or not that's a hundred percent, we go into the point, I agree with you. We, we do all of that tonight, but I think definitely one of the goals for the subcommittee needs to be, if I recall, I recall some of the challenges we had with the PDF document last year, but we also had the challenges with delineating on that document, what the individuals were supposed to complete. I remember that PDF portions of it being highlighted and we were supposed to do the highlighted things and maybe, maybe me and somebody else did the wrong things. And so whatever, I had pulled up while we were talking, I had pulled up the Word document from D E S I and it, it seems pretty efficient, like it, it works, the Word document. So maybe one of the goals of the subcommittee would be figure out how to best point everybody in the right direction in terms of what we're, we're responding to.
I think for, on the, when you're using the Word document, you can remove any of the indicators that you're not using. And leave just the ones that you're using and that should simplify the form.
That's good to know. That's good to know. I didn't know if it would be important to leave any of those others in there in case people want to refer to them.
Oh, don't, don't, don't do that or you'll get, or you'll make your job when you're collecting them much more difficult. Yeah.
Okay. So, okay. So would that
About that.
Then we would end up with a shortened form that had, that includes only what I've highlighted on your hard copies.
I think a shortened form is an excellent idea. One of the things that happened last year, people actually thought they were supposed to fill in on everything, even though things were highlighted. So I think if it's removed, that eliminates that possibility.
Good.
Shorter is better.
Yeah, agree. Less to scroll through. So, yeah.
And looking at the, what you sent us, where you highlighted the indicators we're looking at this year. Based on our earlier conversation, I still feel like everything that we're looking at this year will be able to tie in the extra stuff that Jeff has done since March.
Good. All right. Well, let's, let's, let's look at the form then. Let's just make sure we're all, we all know what we're supposed to be doing here. So if we go to the yellow pages, page forty-two, it says at the bottom, this is just the first page of the evaluation where it says step one and step two. Everybody have that in front of them? Okay, I'm seeing nods. Lori, you okay? Okay. So you need to make sure to put your evaluator name in there. Did we have any trouble with that last year, Cliff? Did anybody forget to include? Okay, good. So step one is to focus on the goals. And each, each of Jeff's goals, and there are four, there are three boxes here, but there are four goals. There are two district improvement goals. So
So you should, you should be able in the Word document to populate all the goals in there.
To actually cut and paste the text of the goals in there or just a district improvement goal too?
No, you should be able to cut and paste the text.
Cause I, I put the text on, on a couple of pages in under the superintendent's performance goals on page forty-four.
Oh, oh, right, 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 right. That's what I'm actually, yep.
Okay, yeah. I'll leave them there. But so should, should there be a fourth row on these goals? Or are we supposed to lump together our perceptions of district goal one and district goal two?
No, you should be able to add, I mean, you should be, you should have a rating for each individual goal.
Okay, so we should be able to tamper with this form and add in.
Yep.
Goal one and two.
Yep.
Okay, so there'll be four rows there, everybody. And we have to, the, the key part of this page.
I have a question. Sorry.
It's okay. Let me just finish this thought. The key part of this page says to complete page, well, I think I've crossed it out now. It's a page four first, four, forty. Complete page forty-four. Before you fill in this. So this, this page is your final decision. But your working page where you're thinking through and making comments is up on page forty-four. Is everybody clear on that? Once you've done page forty-four, you can go back and complete the step one. I don't know if that's clear for people. So this is, this is really the last page that you fill out. You do, it's, it's like the cover page after you've filled out all the back material.
Right.
Okay, go ahead, Angela.
My question was, I was gonna make that comment that Dorothy made, but also when you're looking at page forty-four, we have two district improvement goals. So when we still have the three goals there and we just lumping the two district goals into that third line.
Saying, yeah, I think you need to, you need to find a way to add, if you have two district improvement goals. We'll keep you with the form before we give it to you and see if we can get that fourth row in. Yeah.
I see. Okay. So you wouldn't lump them together?
That's a Dorothy. No, because I mean, the two different, the two different goals could have two different ratings or the same.
Right. So.
So that form, when you receive it, will look a little different. Okay. Step two is focused on the standards. And this is where Dorothy's saying you, you get out the rubric, which is the tan pages. And you'll be referring to the descriptions of the relevant indicators in the rubric, which are highlighted on your hard copy. And again, you go through the work pages, which are in your copy on the yellow, it's pages forty-five to forty-nine, eight, forty-eight. Each of these pages is, represents a short form of one of the standards. So page forty-five is all about standard one. Standard two is on page forty-six, standard three is on page forty-seven, and standard four is on page forty-eight. And again, I've highlighted the the pieces that pertain to the goals that Jeff indicated at the beginning of the year.
I think it, I think it will be helpful on these, these sheets in particular to remove anything that people don't have to consider.
Yeah. So anything that's not highlighted, you don't have to pay any attention to on this. Okay. So when you receive this form, hopefully all that non highlighted stuff will be out of there. But you may want to be looking back at this or you may want to make notes on this before you do your actual form. So you have to, for every one of these highlighted rows, you're needing to decide on a rating. And then you're, you're using that information to roll up some decisions back on that first page. So on step two, on that page forty-two, it has four rows, one for each of the standards. And it asks you to make a summative decision, what, for standard one instructional leadership, is superintendent's performance at the unsatisfactory needs improvement proficient or exemplary level? And you're using all these sort of micro decisions on the later pages to form that decision. Okay. And along with that, you're jotting down and collecting in your thoughts, the evidence that you're using to, to provide a foundation for that decision. The evidence is everything, I just can't emphasize that enough. Not only just in the quality of your work as an evaluator, but in terms of it being useful for Jeff. He needs very concrete information when, when a rating is given, you know, where'd that come from? So taking the time to think back, what was the evidence that, that we saw or was presented to us back in earlier meetings? Is really important piece of the work. So that's step two, the standards. And then step three is your summary, when you've put those together. The goal performance and the standards performance should lead you then to an overall rating. Unsatisfactory needs improvement proficient or exemplary and evidence based comments that summarize. How's that looking?
Just, I would just, the comments are important. And trying to be somewhat concise too, in your comments can be helpful, is concise and targeted. I had someone from another committee call me last year and say, I had nineteen pages of comments that I had. Can you tell my committee to write less? Well, not really, but you could.
Yeah. So I guess, yeah, you have to be, you have to select what's most pertinent, most useful, most informing your decisions.
Another observation I had last year was that there was repetition in the comments.
I mean, within a, one individual's comments?
No.
Across the body.
Across the, the committee. So that also helped to build the preponderance of, of assessment for the final evaluation. It was really, I can, I can't remember a specific example. But, but let's say Susan comments on a particular on a particular item and then Lori does as well, but they look at it from different ways, but they're both talking about the same thing. I mean, that's really important information for Jeff because a lot of six committee members noticed that. And that should be reinforcing to him.
Right.
So I did find that there was a lot of, repetition is the word I'm using, but it's not what I mean, is that there's a thread that runs through the comments. And I remember thinking, cause I just transcribed the comments and put them to him to read. And I remember thinking, gee, I feel like I should be able to write like, you know, a formal assessment and pointing out by pulling it all together like that. But the, the power of just, in my view, last year, the power for Jeff was in reading what everyone wrote. You know, even though there was repetition. That's my view anyways.
Well, and you know, I, I, I agree. I think the repetition is reinforcing. And when you know, there, there are places where instead of the, the compilation being just everybody's running comments, that the compiler does take all the comments and make one composite set of comments pulling from everyone. I always say that the challenge of being the compiler is making sure that you have one voice, but everybody can hear their own voice within that one voice.
So you're saying then that the subcommittee should be writing some kind of summative comments?
I, I mean, it, that's, you guys decide, that's often how it's done. That, you know, even if you're, if two people make similar comments, then you can sort of roll it into one comment. And let those, you know, let those individual voices come through. It's, it, I think it's hard for the superintendent when the composite is just a list of everybody's comments, particularly if they counter each other. That's not really helpful.
Yeah. Okay.
And I, I'm assuming even if you did one composite, that Jeff would see everybody's individual one anyway. So he would have a chance to tease anything out that he needed to tease out.
Okay.
Do we, when we, when we give each committee member the form, do we, I don't remember, is it the entire form with the, with the whole appendix, all that stuff is the, or could we just, or does everybody have that or we can just provide the five page form that has, where we're filling out the evaluation? Like if you, if you, if you download, and I only ask, if you download the Word document from D E S I, it comes with the whole evaluation piece, right? And then the form is stuck in the middle of it. Can you extract just the five pages or from a, right? Can I just extract those five pages?
Yeah, you should be able to. Yep. So the, the subcommittee or who's ever putting together the form for everyone to fill out should be able to get the committee just the form to fill out amended in a way that's specific for, for you guys.
Okay. I, I have, I have that for you. I just did it. So.
Oh, good. Send it over. Don't send it out yet to everybody. Cause I just want to look at it because we have to add that row for that fourth goal and stuff.
And, and take out any of the indicators.
I did, I, I just did that. I added the fourth row for the goal. I removed all the indicators that we're not responding to. So.
That's what, that's what you need. Someone who knows Word well enough to make all those alterations on the form.
Clearly, we don't pay you enough, Jim.
You also could have said I should have been paying more attention to what you guys were saying.
I was gonna say, Jim, you exceeded.
My mind goes in different places. So.
So I have a, a particular question about how we handle this stuff. Lori and I remotely as the subcommittee. If we are, so all these forms come in, they can't get put in the shared drive, right? Or, or what's the process in terms of public meeting or public access, like who, how do we do this remotely?
That's a question no one's asked yet. I'm, I mean, holding the meeting remotely is easy, you post it and you zoom to each other.
Documents, like, so these are gonna get sent in, last year Cliff, they were sent to you specifically, right?
Could they be sent to Christie or to one of you and you share it with each other?
Can we do that? I mean, I don't know what the rules, I don't quite.
Yeah, sure.
So, so if they all came to Lori, she could send them all to me. And then when we, and then when we want to work the document, like we want to cut and paste all the comments together and start to work up some compilation comments, we might do that individually offline and then get together and share what we came up with?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Google Doc, or is that a public document?
Well, anything that you produce in some committee is gonna be a public document, so.
Okay.
If someone asks, it's not like you have to post it, it's if someone asks.
Okay. So it seems maybe we can use Google tools to help us put that together. And that way we can sort of be interacting around some of that.
Yeah, just be careful that if you're using some sort of Google Doc, that when you're, you can't shoot it back and forth to each other.
No.
With comments, you would have to be sitting there together, editing the document together. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, the Google Doc was just be sitting there, so.
Right, but sometimes in Google Docs, people, you know, can edit offline and send it to each other. Don't do that.
Because then, if I work on it, Lori can just go in on her own time and see what I've done.
That would be deliberation outside of a public meeting.
So then we might have to Zoom, FaceTime, whatever, while we're working on the document together? So we have to, both, both eyes have to be on at the same time as well as discussing it?
Yes, yes.
It sounds like, it sounds like we could each do some compilation, like, you know, you could compile the superintendent's goals, materials, I could compile the standards comments. And we do that independently, but when we, but when we go to discuss them and revise them or whatever, then we need to be in the room together in a meeting, a formal meeting. Is that right?
My. But now, now it's asking about shares, yeah, you could use share screen function too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, all I'm saying is, don't edit, each of, don't, each of you edit and send it to each other. Do the editing together.
Yeah.
Or, or if you're each editing a piece of it on your own and then sending it to the other to discuss, that would be okay too. But don't offline be editing back and forth.
Okay, got it. That's helpful. All right. Where do people feel like you might get tripped up this year? Is there anything here that you're feeling like you just can't quite wrap your head around or you're nervous about? Hopefully, everybody learned from the process last year. And if we streamline the form and we get rid of the stuff people aren't supposed to pay attention to, that should help. All right, Jeff, is there anything else you, you want us to be paying attention to as we enter this process? I mean, we're, you're gonna be presenting your, your end-of-cycle report in May, at the next meeting in May, right?
Jeff, you're muted.
I said correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then also, we're gonna all get the self-assessment. Right, Dorothy?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
They're gonna send us a link to that, and you all have a copy of what that looks like, so you could even do it on paper before you get the online version if you wanted to. And then we should, we'll be starting with that, and then we'll go into Jeff's evaluation, which will then get sent, I guess, to Christie. I don't know, where does it get sent? Or could get sent to?
It can, it could get the, Jeff's, the, everyone's individual one?
Yeah.
It could get sent to one of you two.
Okay. Them to, to Lori.
Ru, ru, I mean, from, the legal's recommendation was that, so we're sort of teetering on guidelines, you know, legal's recommendation versus kind of what some of the feedback was relates to the idea of the subcommittee. You know, when I, when I talked to Russ, his feedback was that no school committee member should be receiving the, the evaluations from everybody, that it should be an independent person. The challenges were a small, were a smaller school committee, and our secretary is also the secretary of the superintendent, so that's why I sort of agreed that maybe we would disregard that recommendation. And maybe be tighter on some of the, the things we do around the subcommittee policy to avoid any challenges with having that. So what I would say is, you'll need to make sure you are scheduling and posting with Christie, having the one person receive the evaluations. She then needs to probably make sure where they are on the drive is not public and is only available to the two of you, because it can't be available to the remainder of us. And you need to make sure that none of your communications with Christie back and forth on any of that have me on it, because if three of us, there's a quorum, make sure that there's no deliberation via email like Dorothy said. So I would have one person take the lead on that communication with Christine, and if it's Lori, it's Lori to say, hey Lori, sorry, hey Christie, we need to facilitate, obviously, posting our subcommittee and as well facilitating a drive to be set up that only you two have access to for posting of that.
So I know that the AG's office recommends that someone outside the committee actually do the compilation, but it's really not practical.
Right.
Because, I mean, the person outside hasn't experienced things the way the committee has. And I, I, the only time that I know that someone did that, that a committee did that, was when it was in a, a city where the committee actually had a secretary that was just for the committee and did not also work for the superintendent.
Right.
And who worked very closely with the mayor on the, you know, essentially, essentially was, you know, secretary to the mayor for that aspect of putting together the composite. So I know that's what the AG says, and I'm sure what legal is gonna say, but in practice, it's just, it's impracticality, not a workable solution.
Agreed.
So, so all of the, so are we saying then that all of the forms should be sent to Lori or myself, somebody? We designate?
It sounds like, it sounds like send it to Christie and let her get them to you at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Is that, Jim, is that what you're?
I, I think they should be, all we're asking Christie to do is collect them into one drive folder that only you two have access to.
Okay.
Meaning, rather than a committee member, send it to a committee member. I think it should be committee member to Christie only for the purposes of uploading to the drive for you guys to have access. You know, we're not asking her to do any of the compilation or any of that stuff, but just purely from that perspective, just, just to eliminate the committee member-to-committee member email stuff.
Okay. Alrighty, well, it sounds like everybody feels pretty comfortable with what you're about to enter. So speak now or forever hold your peace.
I can't remember, are individual evaluations, are those public record or just the compilation?
The individual ones, just consider them public record, yes.
The individual self-evaluation forms are considered part of the public record?
All right, wait, two different questions. The individual evaluations of the superintendent are considered public record.
Is that what you meant, Angela? Okay, I didn't know if you were referring to the self-assessment, our self-assessment.
I will, those are public record.
Well, at, at the, it's gonna be sent as a Survey Monkey?
Yeah.
And the last question will be your name, just in, because for the same reason that the superintendent evaluation, if anyone asks. Unless someone asks, I'll be the only one who knows.
Okay. Alrighty, well, I think we're in good form. One, can I ask a quest, a quick question, Dorothy, about the self-assessment? There are like four ratings for each of these categories on here. Underdeveloped, developing, well-developed, embedded, and sustainable. What, what if somebody has a, I don't know?
They could, they could skip it and put it, I think, put something in the comment area?
Okay, so it's not a forced response?
I, I, yes, it's not a forced response.
Okay, so then it's important for people not to skip any of these by accident? They come up one at a time, right?
Yes.
Alrighty, okay, well, I feel like I don't hear anybody raising concerns or questions, feeling confused?
I had questions, but they were all answered, so.
Really? Okay, good. Let me know if anything comes up, Keith, between now and then, that, that you feel like you're confused about or want clarification.
Just, I would just again say, don't let process get in the way of product here.
Yeah, I think our biggest challenge is the fact that the, the year is disrupted. That just complicates having to think how we think through each of these things that we're evaluating, goals and standards, just muddies it a little bit, potentially.
Jeff will clear it all up when he gives his self-assessment.
Yeah, I'm counting on you, Jeff.
Nice handoff, Dorothy, on that. I would just like to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, give a message that I feel like I'm giving all the time, but you know, this, this, this meeting was really important and, but it's less important than it was like two years ago. We've come a long way. And I think that there's been tremendous growth. And and having Dorothy by our side every step of the way has been outstanding. So I think we're in a much better place than we've, they've been for a long time, so. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Dorothy, for, for joining us tonight.
You're welcome, anytime.
Thank you, Dorothy.
So, Jim, we need a motion to adjourn, or?
I have a question.
Jeff, I, I have a question, Jim. Are we meeting on May fourth or not?
I don't, I don't see any need to meet on May fourth currently.
Okay.
Jeff, is that, that's it, right with you, Jeff?
That's fine with me.
All right, and Jeff, oh, we can adjourn, we still have business to do, I forgot, Jim. The, also Jeff, can you say anything about what's happening with graduation?
I, tentatively at least, I think they're gonna try to do a, there's some schools, notably one in the south where they did a, the way they worked it is they had the students come in, one student at a time with up to four people. They walk across the stage, they get a diploma, the, the valedictorian, salutatorian do a speech, they do it recorded. And so they go through this whole process, and then they, they have somebody who was a former graduate of Toronto, who went to California, is in the film industry. Somebody reached out to him, and he volunteered to take all of those clips and put it together in a sort of a graduation ceremony. All those pieces together, and so the students will get a copy of that, that graduation. So he'll piece it together like the kids are all walking across the stage one after another, and then the speeches happen when they normally happen. So, right now, that's what they're looking at, a few schools have done it. They, you know, Diane has found somebody who's, who's very, very good at, at, you know, splicing all this together and works in the industry. And, and it was nice enough to volunteer to, to help. One of the, one of the glitches, and I spoke to Diane today just to get an update, is the company that makes the caps and gowns is in Kentucky, and they're closed. So, of course, right, so they, they want them to have the gowns and walk across the stage and, and make it more like, plus they get to keep that whole, you know, the tassel and all of that business, which would be nice. So they're still working on that. So hopefully, if they can get, they can figure out a way to get those caps and gowns. I know she's reached out to a couple other places. To see if they can do it. So that's the plan right now, you know, for, and then what they were gonna do for during the week before, during the senior week, they were going to, I think the PTO, I think they're buying sweatshirts, they've had these sweatshirts made up, and they say something like, you know, we, we, we face COVID-19, we were out of school for eight weeks, any more test for us, you know, something like that. You know, it's kind of, some kind of funny sweatshirt, so. They're trying to arrange a, you know, a car parade for, for the students, that they'd each get in their cars and do, do something around the towns. Diane's in touch with the, with the police and the fire to see, it would require streets to be closed off and things. So, you know, they're really doing a good job of, you know, trying to make it the, the best possible end of the year for these students. I mean, they really, they really get the short end of it here, and, and so at least if this graduation piece works out, the, the students will have something on a, on some kind of, you know, drive that they can, they can take with them and something to remember.
Are, are you trying to get this centered on the original graduation day?
Well, it wouldn't be, the diplomas would have the, that date on it. The, 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 the poems would have the original date. But to actually get this done, it act, it would take about a week to two weeks of the students walking across the stage and getting, you know, collecting all the data will take a week to two weeks is what Diane thinks.
Okay, so by May nineteenth, when we meet, will this be done or still, or would you provide an update?
I'll provide an update, hopefully it's in, it's, you know, hopefully, usually they graduate the first week, weekend in June, so I'm thinking most of the, most of the data will be collected, whether the actual,
Yeah.
You know, the actual final product is done, I'm not sure about, but I'll, I'll certainly have an update for you.
Okay.
I just spoke to her today, just on this piece, so.
All right, thanks, thanks for that update, I appreciate it. Well, Jim, I think we have some other business we have to vote on.
No, I think we're good, we did, we did that before, in the beginning. Voted on the calendar, but when we started, so.
I forgot, okay, good.
Need a motion to adjourn, and then we got a roll call.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we're gonna go in different order now, because Brady Bunch has moved around. Susan?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Eve?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. Way to go, team.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Be safe, everybody.
Lori, I'll be in touch.
Thank you, Susan.